Hi, Board members. This is the 250th school board. This is such a smooth piece of this call.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Mr. Masterson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson? Mr. Roman?
Here. Mr. President, would you leave us some questions please?
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Schuler, Assistant Superintendent, community members and local staff members, welcome to Hubble Middle School. I would like to take all of you back in history to September of 1992, almost to the day 25 years ago. I'd like to read a short excerpt from an article found in the newspaper titled "Hello Huskies." It says this: "Weeden Hornville Unit District 200 officials got their first official look at the new Hubble Middle School Wednesday night. To celebrate the opening of the new school formerly Weeden Central High School, special festivities were held for Board members, faculty, and media. Guests were treated to a supper before the Board's regular meeting." I'm sorry, I only have popcorn and cookies today. Principal Charles Miller and Assistant Principal Bob Wright gave a guided tour of the building which was transformed into the middle school over the summer. The Weeden Central Tigers moved to the former Weeden Hornville Middle School building at Butterfield and Eastwood Roads. Despite funding problems, construction challenges such as moving lockers to different floors and general disarray, project went smoothly, school officials said. Both students and teachers are enjoying their new surroundings, complete with new colors, purple and silver, and a new mascot, the Hubble Huskies. After interviewing a few staffers that were present for that time, they shared there was quite a lot of debate over what namesake the new school should take. There was talk of naming it after Red Range Middle School, Eleanor Roosevelt Middle School. But at that time, especially since 1990, all the highs of the country were focused skyward because of the space because of the launching, NASA launch to Hubble Space Telescope. And so the school board in 1992 proceeded to vote unanimously and named the new school Edwin Hubble Middle School. The mural in our lobby was created to remind us of that, two things. We wanted to honor Edwin Hubble's scientific achievements and his legacy in the scientific community, specifically in astronomy. We also wanted to honor his connection to our own district, CUSD 200. We were very proud to be able to present that to you earlier this evening. I would like to publicly recognize two very important groups of people here tonight. First is the PTA from last year, 2016-17 school year, and their generous donations and support to make the mural possible. A few of the members from last year are here, Chelsea Keepass-Frawley. Thank you, Chelsea. I'd also like to recognize Vice President from last year was Tracy Ongstad, who is in the back as well. Thank you. Tim Peew was our treasurer, Jen Diomar was the corresponding secretary, Kathy Atkins was our recording secretary. Without them, what you see out there in that beautiful mural would not have taken place. I would also like to recognize another very special person. We worked, we put a lot of hours, she put a lot of more hours than I did. We had a lot of fun doing research. I would get texts at 10:30 at night saying, "I'm going down the rabbit hole, I can't stop researching." It was fun as we looked at the history, we looked at Edwin Hubble, found all kinds of pictures, and began to formalize what a mural would look like. What you see out there really is her original design, which if you look at the original PowerPoint that she sent to me a long time ago, the finished product doesn't look that different. So, Tria Akins, our facilities manager, was instrumental. Our hope is the mural will serve to inspire many future years of Hubble Huskies that we'll never again forget. Let me see if I have namesake a great crowd to be Edwin Hubble Middle School. Thank you, Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. It was a wonderful event. It's wonderful. Next, I want to present, are there any obligations to the agenda of the Board or motion on it?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. It was a wonderful event. It's wonderful.
Next, I want to present, are there any obligations to the agenda of the Board or motion on it? Very none of those recognitions or achievements?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. We are extremely pleased this evening to bring to the Board a special recognition. I'm going to invite Amy Schwartz to come up and join us at the podium. As Amy is making her way up, Amy is a science teacher at Edison Middle School, and she recently received an honorable mention for the Presidential Innovation Award for Environmental Educators from the EPA. She got that award for really an amazing project that was launched a couple of years ago, on back of Edison Middle School. If you were around at that time, you saw the transformation of the space behind the building into really an amazing scientific laboratory. So, let Amy tell you a little bit about that project, kind of where it came from, and then we'll welcome her to the scene.
First of all, thank you so much for having me here for this recognition. I really appreciate that. I also have to say right off the bat that, just like Harry Potter would, I have loads of help. So, let me tell you a little bit about the project, and then I'll explain a little bit how it's kind of been sort of a community effort. The project is a brewery at the back of Edison Middle School. And if you go back there, you will see two plots, one of which people think looks not quite like where we showed it, and one which is quite amazing, prayer flats up above our heads. So, it's pretty spectacular when you go back in your head. But it was a project that involved quite a few different people, starting with actually Rachel, my mentor, who kind of planted the seed of this idea in my head. And I took it to my biology students at Edison Middle School, and we created teams, teams that were in charge of site planning, and teams that were in charge of advertising, and teams that were in charge of raising funds. And we eventually planned an entire brewery that we presented to the administration. But it turns out that we, that land is really sort of managed also with the Weeden Park District. And so, the Weeden Park District was involved with our entire plan. The administration was involved, the students were involved. Once everything was planned and approved, we went out with our ideas. We had all the students in the entire school adopting plants. So, we came up with about 250 or 300 plants that we could plant in the brewery. And then, my biology students encouraged the explorers to help out with the planting. So, between the Weeden Park District and the students, we planted the brewery. Now, it's been a huge learning experience because a brewery is very, very special. And actually, one of the most important resources is dirt. And my students learn a lot about why the dirt here is special. They learn about plants, they learn about plant families, they learn about photosynthesis. It's very authentic. We're out there all the time. And it's continuing to be an authentic source of learning because this year we are collaborating with Morton Arboretum and the researchers there to investigate how to remediate the brewery that is smaller, or not quite as diverse. So, we are working, this is what this researcher does, they have an entire test brewery set up at Morton Arboretum. And we've stepped into our class, we are visiting them at Morton Arboretum, and we are actually going through the process of trying to remediate part of the brewery. So, my point in partially telling you all of this is it really has brought the community together. Parents help out with believing, my secretaries and the administration are one of the first people out to help with believing. The students are involved at all six and eight brewery levels that I happen to have personally. So, it really has been a community project, and it's continuing to really be a good source of learning.
Before you head back to your chair, if you would mind, it's okay, fine. Come on up, the Board will want to congratulate you, shake your hand. I would certainly thank Amy this evening, as well as Lauren Conriff, who's the Assistant Principal at Edison. So, I think an amazing, authentic learning experience, and so pleased to have that opportunity.
Proceeding with the agenda tonight, our next item is public comments. Is there any public comments?
No.
Then we'll proceed to the superintendent's report. Would you like to show?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Just a couple of things quickly. So, one thank you to the Board for coming and joining us a little bit early for the presentation of the amazing display in the lobby here at Hubble. Don introduced and recognized Tria for her work in putting that together. But I just want to quickly at the onset say a huge thank you to Tria, not only for that work. Every time we host an event in this building, when anybody walks in this building, the first thing they say is, "This school looks just like it did the day that it was opened." This does not look like a building that has been open. And I can tell you without any doubt that that's Tria. This is her baby, and she takes amazing care of that. So, just to the Board, I wanted to recognize her. She's done an amazing job, I think, of protecting this asset for you. So, Tria, thank you. Couple of other things that I'll mention a week from tonight. Also, here at Hubble, we're going to be hosting our State of the Schools meeting, so that will take place inside the auditorium at 7:00. Like we've done the last couple of years, we will have a presentation in the auditorium, and then an opportunity out here to do some question and answer session in the comments. So, we'll have some cookies and treats for folks after the session that come out here. So, please help us continue to spread the word about that. This Friday, thanks to some good work by Erica, Chris Crabtree worked with Erica in the planning of this really good day of giving in District 200. I think the Board is as well aware, a number of communities greatly impacted by hurricanes this year, and so a number of our buildings candidly already had efforts underway to either, you know, collect supplies and money or do something either in conjunction with another school, but we wanted to do something district-wide as well. So, on Friday, we will be collecting donations, cash donations, that will be donated to a foundation in Houston that is utilizing the money to help take care of schools that are going to need quite a bit of work in the aftermath of that. So, that is this Friday. Brooke also asked me to mention that this year we have an amazing lineup of parent education seminars that our social work department has put together. One in particular that I wanted to mention is that on October the 12th, in partnership with the Studio Movie Grow, we're going to be doing a screening of the movie Screenagers that is a resource intended to kind of help parents work with their kids that are growing up in this age of devices and screens that in many ways complicate the efforts to be a parent and raise kids. And so, Studio Movie Grow is agreed to work with us to do a screening of that movie, and then we've brought some planning to bring some resources in after to do kind of a structured review with parents that are in attendance. So, again, that'll be October the 12th at the Studio Movie Grow, and I've heard very positive things. I know that Jalan and kind of others have had a chance to see that film, and I think it'd be a great exciting opportunity for us. And then, last thing I just wanted to mention, I think we shared at our last meeting that we have an mobile app that's available to parents. We want to continue to remind parents of that great connection tool. We've had 1,700 downloads of that app already, and we'd like to continue to see certainly that number grow as part of our communication and outreach effort. So, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Any questions or comments? You want to give a superintendent's report?
On next Thursday, we also have the Community Advisory Committee here at the same time.
Wednesday, yeah. Wednesday, yes. Wednesday, Citizens Advisory Committee is going to meet at the same time as State of the Schools. Excuse me, we're going to do that later.
Next, I want the General Counselate to consent. We only have 10 items. Number one, acceptance of grant from EcoLab Washington Elementary School. Two, acceptance of disk from Hubble DTA. Three, approval of vice devised policy 2.260 uniform grievance. Four, approval of renewal screening achievement series and analytics data for our subscriptions. Five, approval of disposal surplus of economic assets. Six, approval of annual contract and revenue. Seven, approval of national agreement for high school grants. Eight, approval of bills payable and payable. Nine, approval of minutes in August 16, 2017, open and closed. And approval of story reports and post sessions prior to April 2016, as allowed by law. And 10, approval of personnel report into employment, consideration, retirement, and need of access to administrative certified classified non-ameasement. Are there any items Board members want to move from the Senate? Very none, Dr. Schuler?
No additional comments other than anything I want to mention in the first two items. As I typically comment on and share, you're accepting about $16,000, over $16,000 in very generous donations. I had a chance this morning to meet with the PTA Council at their first meeting, and I expressed to the Council our great appreciation for the work that they do to bring resources into our schools. Obviously, that forced them to look at it this evening, but they're amazing. And one last little piece, if you look at that grant from EcoLab, I think Mr. Paulson had asked a question at the last meeting when we were disposing of some surplus furniture, kind of asked a question, where's some of the new furniture coming from? Our buildings and our teachers have really been working hard on securing grants to bring into place 21st century furniture to kind of upgrade our spaces. If you look at that grant from Washington, it was addressing the math differentiation area, and some great opportunities. So, again, I think positive movement as a result of having identified furniture as something that we want to work on over time.
Any Board members have questions or comments that you need to add something to anything? I thought on the number four, it says the strand achievement series and analytics and so on. You know, I hope we'll be incorporating that information to the course of that testing and progress that you see there. That the important information is here, across the program is really important. And then, the number seven is, let's see, crossword. There was some kind of detail about the free and reduced students, the discounted fee, I guess, to be able to participate. Is that the first thing? How does that come, how do the collectors, you know, we get the money from the club, you don't collect from individuals? How do they come aware of those free and reduced students? Is that public information, or do we have to prepare for that?
It's not public information, that obviously something we're going to have to work on as a part of this new agreement that some Dr. Ray and I have talked about, we're going to need a process for being able to communicate that information without obviously violating any of the records.
Brooke, we've had a conversation with the groups already, and have talked about the process that would be in place to protect the student and family confidentiality, and yet let the club know about those free and reduced students. So, and that section and that donation agreement was worked out. We did talk about that with the Board, you said with the free and reduced.
And then, as far as that, I assume they try to cross the program, not this one, because we'll be reading those, you know, mine, those fees, we do those students. Any other comments, questions, or Board members? Very none. That's for Ocean, second to the 20% of the General Counselate. You have done Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Second, I have Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Sutcliffe, please call.
Mrs. Crabtree? Yes. Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Masterson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes, the consent agenda is approved. We now move to action items. There's one action item, approval of resolution to adopt the 2017 need to budget. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. As soon as I introduce Mr. Farley, who's going to give the Board just a brief update on the budget before we ask for your motion for approval this evening, I do want to just make a special quick thank you or recognition for budget this year. As the Board knows, the process of developing a budget is actually a year-long process. It begins back in January, when you authorize us to begin development of the budget, look at your financial projections, move that into whatever decisions you have to make in preparation for it. Obviously, as we move through the spring and look at any particular initiatives that might be part of the development of that budget, or in this case, this year, you look at some of the costs that were avoided in the budget to allow us to address our needs. That is a long process of development. This year especially, the challenge and the layer of the budget is that we were literally reacting to information, especially on the state budget, that had the potential for shifting that budget in really big ways. And so, certainly, Bill, you know, through the support of some of these professional organizations did an admirable job of just staying on top of any of those developments, so that as much as possible we'll bring into this evening is certainly the budget we anticipated bringing to. There are some changes as a result of that law having passed, but a huge thank you to Bill for the work this year. So, I'm going to hand you over to him, and let Mr. Farley make a few comments.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. What a long, strange trip it's been here so far of the budget process in State of Illinois. This is probably the most change we brought to record, both getting a ton of the budget as I recall, but so we wanted to go through and highlight those changes and talk about them a little bit. And so, you can approve the budget for 2017-18. The document attached to the Board is the state, is the form that we have to file the budget on. We've also provided in your green folders the final document in the format that we provide for the Board as well. That's a little simpler to follow, if you're a foreuser, probably, as far as the budget goes. But I'm going to start off first at the revenue section of the budget. We mentioned to the Board, and I think we've even not included the day about it, that corporal personal property replacement tax was greatly reduced over the prior year, and some of that was due to the overpayment that per prior years that they didn't catch up, but they also were directly more on the way from that CPRT that goes to local government bodies, and the payroll covered it well today in time recall. But we did capture zero while of the CPRT and the transportation fund, and we produced the amount of the IFRF fund, the education fund would stay the same. If you recall, when we did the tenant's budget this year, we did not have budget for full amount that we had actually received in the prior year, because we were worried something like this was coming, and then it'll be a little bit perverse. And when you look at the final budget, you'll notice that we zeroed out transportation and IFRF was reduced. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about why we were issued that transportation. We increased the other line item, I think we just talked a little bit about the process where we're going to be collecting a fee, and obviously, we're still early in the budget process of knowing what the amount is worth of parent contribution for the process, but we've got some revenue included for that budget, as well as expenditures of home stocks as well. Probably the biggest change in the budget, and the change in how we budget, some line items in the budget are in fact, it's Senate bill, like I read in 1947, Senate bill one, turned into the Senate bill in 1947, and that collapsed into a whole harness amount for General State Aid, and just again, for my collection, we got quarter thousand General State Aid over in the OANF fund. But what is our normal allocation of General State Aid went up considerably as they collapsed four different categorical funds into the General State Aid function line item, and we have received the August payments that we did not receive, those are in, as well as the first payment in September. One good part of this, I would say, is those four categoricals used to come quarterly, and it's become late. Now, we're receiving those on a monthly basis, so as cash flow goes, it's a good thing that those categoricals are now received on a monthly basis. We still have special exemptions of work from the money, drivers end, which I'm going to talk about in a second, and transportation are outside of that funding formula, Senate bill 1947. Those four that you see now, that we had normally budgeted and then zeroed out, and the money has been allocated to the General State Aid line item and added to OANF. Again, we are a whole under the whole harness right now, which is about 12.2 million, almost 12.3 million, is our whole harness amount, plus the 300,000 that they're considering. The state is still going to take some time to figure out how much I did, it's such the estimates we had, about 300,000, and that is completely the budget as well. Finally, on the drivers outside, we did define allocation for the state this year, and then it go up, so we've increased that revenue line item to final budget as well. Medicaid, we talked a little bit about this at the post of the budget, we did see a decrease in Medicaid in line item in our actuals from the prior year. We have bumped that a little bit. Credit to Dr. Finlayless, for carbon, for all the paperwork and requirements that have needed to do that. We have increased that document for about a couple hundred thousand dollars over the prior year. We had to increase Title II, thank, we got some information from the state on Title II, so that allocation actually went down a little bit. We did get some additional funds from another part of Title II, but we saw a large decrease in the overall Title II funding. Transportation reimbursement, we talked, again, a lot of this, we talked about in the Department of Commerce Finance Committee. The state has upped the corporation amount for funding of transportation, and the Board is aware that our expenditures did go up when we rebid that, so a function of how we receive funds from the state for transportation reimbursement are driven by what our costs are, we know that by that, almost 19%, so we are going to get more funding there. We were able to eliminate the General State Aid line item, zero that out, and that is okay, it's part of the fund in General State Aid line item. Regular transportation, we're increasing from 250,560, and specialized from 33 to 3.5. Though they're still conservative numbers, the state wants to fund at a 85% corporation amount for regular transportation, last year it was 71. They want to fund at a 93% corporation for special ed, and last year it was 91%, so not a big change with Vegas system right there, but we're waiting to see what happens with the state. We've kind of kept those corporation amounts flat with last year, because we just don't know if the state decides to sign a lot of money instead of regrouping this amount, and other districts, they may, their contracts go up, they may run on the money soon. So, those are conservative estimates, the state has not posted them on their website yet. We're ready to get that first categorical thing here towards the end of September, so we're hoping we'll find out what the actual numbers are. They could go up, I don't believe they'll go down, but those, that's some good news as far as state funding on transportation. And then, finally, we've added in the state tier assignment, and we are required in our budget to, when we file 5035, include that state payment, it's about $69 million, it's gone up markedly over the last three or four years, so we have, it's a bit of money in, money out, we never hit our actual works, so we have to include it on the budget line item, so it's shown as a revenue expenditure, and it's made by the state. Moving on to expenditures, we talked about this at the public hearing, but the Board approved flight salaries or administrative salaries, so we reduced those about by about $93,000 on teacher salaries and the 115s. Teacher salaries and the 115s, we've increased that by about $500,000 on the 35, 34.5 million line item. The 115s are our teachers, our traditional non-classroom teachers, like social workers, a lot of the staff that come into high of Boston, there's always some fluctuation there. This is building in what I believe to be some pushing. I don't think we'll hit that number, but there's always this, we have movements and other things going on. We want to diversify a little bit flexibly. Overall, aid salaries, we reduced that by about $100,000. And now we have a number of expenditures that are tied to the lacrosse program. We increased the extra duty line item for the impact of additional coaches from lacrosse. We decreased the TRS line item. If you recall, last time we discussed that TRS fed, that federal surcharge of 44% was passed unanimously in the House, sent in to reduce it down to 10%, and the governor recently signed that, so that's not bad. We're working with the face department to see how that will look in the future, but that's a great win, very positive thing for school districts around the state that they don't have to earmark 44% of teacher salaries or flight salary towards TRS line item. They can use that, we can use that to look at other staff, other places, spend that money for the need and some orders dependent. So that line item decreased almost $200,000. We've increased benefits by a couple hundred thousand dollars again, so it's given ourselves a little bit more pushing. We did see some increase in enrollment in our overall plan, so we've increased that line item a little bit. Travel services are getting bumped up a little bit for lacrosse as well as for supplies. And as I mentioned, we've added in TRS on behalf payment that we're playing through the budget, that's the money out as far as how the state pays that. So overall, we are asking the board to approve the balanced budget. We have an operating surplus of about $488,000 on our operating budget, and if you look at all funds, it's about $500,000 positive. So again, this is a 73% enrollment, the board has approved a balanced budget, and I will entertain any questions later if we have to ultimately quickly. Your order of changes, so since we posted this back.
Questions from board members?
I have a few. Just to kind of highlight a few items, you had mentioned the amount that the state pays for the retirement program on the behalf of our district, and that number is 69 million?
Correct.
And if there was some pushdown to the local level, which has been discussed at times, that would be part of that number, that may be something we have to pay a huge Right. Okay. And then secondarily, there's a transfer into the capital projects funds for 390,000. Do you basically review what that's for?
Sure. The board approved, it's part of the sharing of the funding formula, about $2.4 million for projects that go into sub-fund of the operations and maintenance fund. Additionally, the board approved the transfer of $390,000 from fund balance to the capital projects to do additional work associated with some roofs and flooring that was moved into the capital projects fund. So that month, $390,000 is on top of the almost $2.5 million we get in our capital or sub-fund of our OANF.
And you're talking about spending, or I'm sorry, the Sherman Burgess amount, 2019, we were able to get about $7 million, I think is the right number. And in this year's budget, it's what, 2.45%?
Correct.
The board's adding the value of the budget.
That's in the sub-fund, the capital projects fund, it's a sub-fund of the operations and maintenance fund, which is part of the operations and maintenance fund, so part of the operating budget.
So it's part of the $13 million, $13.8 budget under the expenditures of the operation bank?
Correct.
Okay, that is the correct number that we're funding for Sherman Burgess.
That is the reset number for this fiscal year that the board intended to spend.
Okay. And then you mentioned something about the, you know, the tax rate or the tax collections. This budget assumes that we, well, ultimately we have the issue of certificate levy.
Correct.
And when we do that, we do that in a similar way. And basically, we're assuming this budget, I'm going to question whether we're including or not including any growth based on CPI that may be available under the tax level. Are we budgeting that revenue and then extending that amount?
Yes, we're budgeting to capture the CPI, and that was, we found out about in January, that was, we did in January as well as estimated growth.
So in theory, if we do not in November then pass the certificate levy that includes that amount, what would our, we're a balanced budget now, so if we don't have certificate levy to include that 2%, what would be our deficit in this school?
Straight CPI is about 2.6 million dollars, so CPI is a little 2% and we get about $130 million operating revenue last year, so it's about 2.6 million dollars if we did not go for that and then any additional funds that we get for growth, which is probably a little million dollars. So 36.
So our, this budget is made under the assumption we will pass a certificate levy to capture the available dollars in the CPI.
Yes.
There's a little later on, we were talking about the, some secure entry issues and early learning center. The early learning center dollars, I believe that would be spent, how much is in this budget or is it part of the capital fund balance, or how is that piece of that being handled within this budget?
It's a fund in the early learning center?
Yeah.
Is there any, for starters? I mean, you know, we were talking about that a few minutes, and I'm just trying to understand whether we're budgeting anything or if it's included in here or not.
There's nothing included in this year's budget. I think the anticipation is that any of the discussions around early learning center, that 20 to be fiscal 19 budget discussion, probably the only thing, there are some costs in your budget associated with architectural fees, and so any fees that we perhaps incurred in some of the early design may be incorporated in this budget.
And that may be part of that Sherman Burgess follow of 2.5 million?
That would not be, that's just part of your annual allocation in your budget for architectural services.
What about security expenses? Is there anything in this budget for that?
Not part of this budget.
So in hindsight, then this budget runs till June 35th, so the Sherman Burgess 2.4 million is going to be used for what purpose in this budget?
It was already used, so it is for the work that was completed this summer. You did roofing projects at Edison and Leesburg, you did several paving projects, Bill reminded the buildings and flooring projects. So the work that was completed the summer that we just came through, your budget dollars for this year were expended for that purpose.
Okay, and then again, the assumption that Sherman Burgess is a funding for the future, we did not decide to apply the amount this year to fund the roof that's going to be needed, funded paid for 20 years ago. So we basically spent what we set aside.
Can you have other board members have questions or comments?
Just to be clear, the, on the revenue side and expenditures, like the lacrosse elements just kind of met each other out, just for clarity there. Correct.
How many of these students are going to be in the lacrosse?
Here are no other questions and comments. I asked for a motion to second to approve the resolution to adopt 2017 budget. Senator. You have done Mr. Mampson?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, please call the board.
Mr. Mamperson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cracktree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution to adopt the 2017 budget. Senator.
Mr. Farley's handle our mind right here, remind me to go along with the number of signatures on that budget, so you don't always have to sign stuff while we're doing along with the signatures.
Next dialogue agenda with our discussion items. First, the discussion item is the facilities plan update for the early learning center.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. I am extremely pleased to continue to bring this discussion forward this evening, so just by a quick recap, at the last board meeting, the board reviewed a number of potential scenarios or solutions for the early learning center. They reviewed recommendations from the facilities committee to narrow that scope to, I think, three of those options that were still in consideration. After the last meeting, both the finance committee and facilities committee have met to continue moving that work forward, and so we've got two updates for you this evening underneath this agenda item. The first is that we're going to bring to you what the finance committee has brought forward, and that's a funding scenario or funding option for the early learning center. So Mr. Farley, you want to use our guest?
Sure. For my interview, introduce Tammy. Tammy, I just want to run through a chart of both the finance and facilities committee look at and look for the different options associated with funding options, and really we're focusing on the items that last time on our funding options, which we can ask Tammy to speak to or to come out tonight. Finance committee went through this with Bob Lewis at their most recent meeting. Bob, most you're used to seeing Bob, is out of town, fishing, trying to pull a hook out of his thumb right now, but so we were fortunate to have Tammy here tonight, and Tammy's been speaking to that last funding option, which the finance committee again reviewed recently and wants to report to the full board for review. So, but as Tammy, you got to show a little over and talk a little bit about debt certificate action.
Thank you. And Bob really did get the worst of this, so he'll have to ask about that the next time this evening. So he started the campaign here, but I'd love to talk with you, as Bill said, about debt certificates, and some of you may have some familiar interviews, but I'm just going to start by talking about particulars of this type of borrowing mechanism that is available to all of the school districts. The main detail, I guess, the main takeaway for you as a board is that debt certificates must be paid back with operating funds. There is no ability to levy a separate property tax to pay debt service out of operating funds. The maximum length of maturity for debt certificates is 20 years, and debt certificates also count against a statutory debt limit calculation, much like with issued bonds. Again, debt certificates also are incorporated into that formula. By way of legal process requirements for the board documentation, there's really just one step in the process that you have to undertake, and that's approval of a resolution to actually issue the debt certificates. Because there is no ability to levy a separate property tax, you do not have to have a public hearing, you don't have to have any sort of 30-day petition period, you sometimes have to have what happened with bond issues for debt certificates. Again, the only requirement for the board is to adopt a resolution for the actual sale of those certificates. If we look at the next slide, we ran some numbers just to give you some initial thoughts about costs, and we used two different project amounts, so 12 and a half million and 15 million, and ran those over 10, 15, and 20 years at current market conditions. So for example, with a 12 and a half million dollar option with a 10-year payback, payment is just over $1.1 million per year, so the interest cost over that 10-year period would be a total of about $1.6 million. So that's how we, you can see the chart, and obviously, when you go with a longer payback period, while the annual payments will have less pressure on your annual budget, in aggregate, the total debt service cost will be more expensive. You can see obviously the 20-year maturity with the 12 and a half million, and this is a good example. So your payment goes down by about $540,000 per year, but your total debt service cost or the interest over the life of the transaction is almost $5 million. So that gives you a frame of reference, and horizontally, you can see the same trend in the $15 million scenario. So I know one of the things that Bob was stressed with the finance committee, and obviously it's an important message for the board as well, if we decide to issue debt certificates, you do want to feel very comfortable as a district that you can afford to make those payments out of your operating funds during this period. Are there any questions?
Number three. Number one, this scenario is what we're anticipating using to pay for.
Do you really want to say that a little bit?
Specifically, that's it. And we haven't decided, there's a recommendation, I assume, for the length of these funds, you know, to maybe 10 years.
We have not brought a specific recommendation around that. I think that's obviously as we, this is the option that the board is comfortable with moving forward. I think that's probably a discussion that needs to perhaps go back to the finance committee. The finance committee, as we reviewed this option last time, did look at those specific scenarios, but we just wanted to identify them for the board this evening so you had some sense of kind of the range of financial obligation based on length of time and obviously amount.
And then, you know, there's an issue of a resolution we have to pass that tonight, presumably?
No, you would, so you passed that resolution at the point that you were ready to issue that debt.
And if we do that, one is, is this an annual payment or one is the first payment?
My understanding is that the district would likely budget in FY19.
Correct.
So you have two semi-annual payments, have a principal payment once a year and then an interest payment twice a year.
So there'd be nothing in the budget that we just pass. In what rate is the part of the statistic interest rate?
No, I apologize, I did not have that with me, but I will be glad we can help us to work for you. Yeah, because the 20-year is just around four, so the 15 and the 10 will be a little bit longer, so I'd give those for you.
And if we, and that's a fixed number?
Correct, fixed rate, yes.
And so, and then the 4%, if we would do a bond referendum, or let's say that what we were anticipating in the referendum, we had passed, what would the rate of it be? It's substantially different, but obviously, you know, is it a municipal rate or is it a higher rate because it's a certificate?
Typically, interest rates for debt certificates are anywhere from 10 to 15 points, 0.1 to 0.15%, simply because you don't have the separate property tax running backing it up, but they're very widely accepted in the marketplace, much like bonds are, they just carry a slightly higher rate.
So put that in perspective, 1.5, so on $12 million of the, what, can?
Grab my.
I have too much water.
Sorry, you said to the, the.
Yeah, 12.5 million, a 1, a 0.15, would be, what would that amount to annually?
Maybe $19,000.
Okay, so it's not substantially more than what you were discussing. The biggest difference again is it comes out of the existing operating levy that we're limited on.
Operating funds, so the main source of revenue for the district obviously is your levy, but you have other sources of revenue that you could put toward the payment.
Okay, so that would come out of, come out of operations, correct, and as well as our Sherman Burgess funding would come out of operations. Those would be separate distinct numbers through the passing.
I think that, that's a decision that the board is going to have to make.
To ask a question, where are we, is it 11 and what is this future?
Bill, you're right.
I believe as the last audit, we were 47% of our overall debt limit. That number changes as with each year, it starts with 15, and also we are paying off that at a time, so we'll have an updated number here soon. Our audit information should be coming back to the school leadership at this stage of that percentage.
This amount of debt though is not going to substantially impact This, this amount of debt, though, is not going to substantially impact that percentage on our debt service level.
No, the calculation is, uses thirteen point six percent of your overall PAB. Your school district PAB is going up, so as of the bottom, as far as the overall principal that you need to issue, this amount is very small. And then we're paying off about twenty million a year. Thank you for your question. This year, it's about twenty million that will pay off from our overall. Outside, they are a hundred and sixty million in ballpark for that time. Outside of that, overall, the overall number is, is well before that.
No, since two thousand twenty one, when did we see that debt service drop? It was like a year, two years, it falls off.
All right, so you have, again, another year, there's a slight dent in our debt service as a result of non-referendum bonds starting to roll off. And I think it's another four years out on their side of that before you see the first significant drop on referendum.
Actually, until we refinance, it's growing. You know, in two thousand seventeen, we were about eighteen point six million payment a year. And if I go out to two thousand twenty, it's growing, it's about twenty three. So it's almost five, and we borrow that four year cycle unless we refinance. We're not in a position to refinance yet, but we anticipate doing that this next year. So, I mean, until we refinance, you know, if we just stay at the current schedule we have right now, it's a growing, only if we refinance, it could drop. Then they drop, and they stay at the level, you know, it hopefully won't jump as much as jumping in.
If I remember correctly, we have four steps to our refinancing project. We've completed step one, two, intentionally completed steps three, a year from now, four, we can cover the land side after that year of that. Any other questions or comments from the board?
So, so these dollars would essentially pay for the construction of the building? And since we're ninety, ninety six, I need to nine months away from that possibility, we don't need to make decisions tonight, in terms of dollars or the maturity that we need, pardon? We just need to turn a commitment.
I do want to mention, as we looked at this at the finance committee, one of the things that we mentioned as part of this presentation is that our discussion with the finance committee was in using this funding option in conjunction with some portion of your fund balance. I think the concept we talked about at the finance committee is, as you look at the capital plan and the condition one year one need identified at the existing Jefferson is a little over five million dollars. And so the concept we talked about with the finance committee was committing a little over five million dollars in fund balance in conjunction with this option. And so, there's no, you know, the two scenarios that we ran up there did come from, obviously, looking at some potentially realistic numbers around the early learning center, and that commitment of some fund balance to bring the number down. So, you know, again, just in summary, I guess, from, you know, from my perspective, in terms of responding to feedback that we heard from the community who are using available fund balance, that you had the ability to build through the work that you've done over the last couple of years of budget, so you can be committing and using those dollars. Obviously, this is a borrowing structure that allows us to get the capital we need upfront without fully depleting your fund balance to a place that I don't think we would be comfortable, and I think the board would be uncomfortable, but obviously, we're not levying additional tax for the community. You are not increasing their future tax obligation. We would be using future operating dollars to address this.
Yeah, I think it needs to be crystal clear that this funding strategy makes sense, support it, but we don't know exactly where those monies are going to come from or the amount. I mean, until we land on a particular price and structure and the requirement to build that building, the fund balance can be tapped for a million, three million, we still don't really know at this point in time, as well as how important debt service would look like. So it's a combination of a lot of moving parts until that is finalized.
I think the finance committee basically discussed a couple of different scenarios and said, okay, what's the cost of the building? And we don't know that, but I think that's driven a little bit by what we've included in the building. It may not include the head start program, may not include some of the programs that go on at Jefferson, so that, you know, we're trying to drive that price down with the number. And once we arrive at that number, then we have fund balance as a source. Hopefully, we also have some fundraising as a source. And then conclude with whatever is needed beyond that, go with this, like you say. So, you know, hopefully, maybe we don't need to borrow ten, or something less than four. We'll see, but, you know, again, it's driven by the cost of the building. So, we're relying on finance, I mean, the facilities committee will drive that number down.
And that was the point of my question, is we've got time to figure out, go through the process to figure out what the dollars and the length of the service are. So is it the recommendation of the finance committee that we proceed that project with this scenario or not? Is that the official recommendation?
I would say that if we conclude that we need to have an early learning center, and we're going to commit to a number of dollars to fund that early learning center, that some portion of fund balance, hopefully some fundraising dollars, and a operating budget debt, will you call this again, debt certificate, would be sufficient dollars to achieve that goal without therefore referendum money? Because we literally, we've got two referendums that dealt with Jefferson. You know, I'm not sure, I thought Jefferson was completely the last referendum. Truthfully, I thought it would be funding more, that's beside it. But this item is, you know, how we're going to deal with it, what we believe, assuming we as a board believe that this is an essential part of the education program we've got, I think, with kind of consensus of that. So that, so those three or four sources would hopefully drive.
So that's, yes?
Correct, that's a yes. And just for the sake of the public, six years ago, the board adopted a policy to set up a rebate sort of twenty five percent of operating revenue to meet any critical sources that may arise during the course of the year. There's a bank funding from the state, from some other sources. Right now, we have an excess of five million dollars below that twenty five percent as a cushion. And what we're talking about here is using some of that cushion, plus a certificate of insurance, a certificate of lease, and perhaps foundations. And the finance, I mean, the early childhood center. So that's the context in which we're talking about it.
One more thing, I just want to mention, the board was a pass, but you will receive your AFR here in a couple of months. And we didn't see the final AFR yet, but when we calculated, I think, with the finance committee last year, as a part of our referendum process, looked at what is that cushion above the twenty five percent level, and kind of landed on that seven and a half million dollar number, I anticipate that that's going to, you see the next AFR, our fund balance is likely going to go back as a result of the fiscal year that we just entered. We are still shy on one category. That's a little under three minutes.
So that would go with the fund balance?
My last question, between, then also, what's the AFR?
Annual financial report.
You have other questions for me? Thank you very much.
Oh, he just asked.
Can you even talk about some of the other school districts that have used this, that had to fund construction and projects?
Sure. I was just at Roselle and Twelve School District the other day, because they're going to under the capital project with debt certificates. And they asked us the same question. Do a lot of school districts use these? And it's become more and more popular over the years. On our list, I think there were, in the last five or six years, there were up to ten school districts in the major county that we were familiar with, like Lake Park High School, Roselle School District, Twelve, and a couple other ones I've not picked me up. But they're definitely a common practice for company capital projects.
And our debt certificates, same thing or different than these certificates, which are some of the projects that are out?
Sure, but they are slightly different. The concept, in terms of how you pay for the debt services, is the same, you don't have to pay for it out of operating, but it gets to legality, who actually owns the project. In the case, if you, for example, were going to build a free standing structure, there are rules or laws that should stay in the state of Illinois district, how you can fund projects, so that it has to be a referendum, basically. Can't, other exceptions. And one way is to meet the exception is to do a new certificate, because at the end of the term of lease, the district then can take ownership of the property. So it's more about the legalities and what you're trying to achieve. If you're building a building that's connected to an existing facility, the debt certificate is our model. To get to a free standing structure, you would have to go.
So, that was going to be my follow up question. So we were choose to build a new early childhood center, state of Illinois, as opposed to the scenario we're looking at relative to change.
Yes.
The approach we'll be using.
Right. Little, little legal process, but same concept in terms of how you as a board would pay for it.
One follow up question. We're making a lot of reference to the factors that come out of operating. And what's the impact? Why, why do we have done that in the past? Why do we, you know, why do we try to go referendum? What's the significance of that?
I recall, back before the first referendum, there was a great discussion about using certificates of debt, certificates of lease, because financing for the state is uncertain, because it was coming out of operating revenue, and it had just come out of two thousand eight, two thousand nine, twelve years. It wasn't a lot at the time, but I guess it was experience, and just getting to know how to operate with these, that's a, certificates of debt, certificates of lease. And obviously, they have a balanced budgets, so it's something that you feel can contribute to service if you say.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of glad that question, because I think I know the answer. You know, the bottom line is, we take money out of operations versus out of debt service. But debt service is a new level. When we take it out of operations, what do we have? We have to take it out of what I would call classroom class. So we may have to increase classroom. Every time you take something out of operations, it reduces what's otherwise available, pay for supplies in a normal operation, like a circle. So, because of the referendum failure, we're now having to do this. So we're looking at a million and a half dollars potentially that we have to take out of what otherwise might have gone classroom activities or operations and pay for it. So, does that kind of sum up that? Remind us, David?
I think the overall concept, so yes, we are going to have to make an adjustment in the budget to be able to absorb this. I get nervous about throwing examples out in front of the community that might suggest something that, that there may not be a component of that. We have a budget that covers a number of different areas. I guess, just from my perspective, I believe that the numbers that we're looking at, we have the ability to absorb that in future budgets. And I guess, you know, Jim, a couple of, our budget, still you referenced earlier, a levy that does increase revenues that do come to the district. Mr. Farley talked about state funding that's going to increase revenue as well. And so I think one other way of looking at this is to say we are obligating a portion of future revenue that might otherwise go to a different expense in the district. I wouldn't assume that it means we're cutting existing service to our companies.
Okay, how about, we're going to get some new revenue source from the Amazon property. So that could be substantially helpful for me. So it may not affect classroom activities. So, again, I just want to make sure it's clear, with the extension of operating use of debt service.
Well, I don't know whether it will impact current activities, but it certainly will impact other decisions that a board may have otherwise made with revenues that come into the district.
And my point, Jim, is that flexibility wasn't necessarily built to us in the first Jefferson referendum. Now it seems that we didn't really have a management.
I think that is very true, and I just want to make it clear, because you kept talking about operations and knowing what that means. It's a, it's kind of using a source that really, historically, you don't want to provide education services.
And I think, just again, a point of clarity, that this is not our asset until that twenty year is over, that we take ownership of that property, that building. Until that time, the debt holders really own that building, we're renting from it at this point in time.
No, no, that's basically, certificates with debt certificates, you would have the title to the property. The legal documents, when they're active, the debt certificate concept really speaks to installment payments, and you're making of a loan of the right, whether it's ten to four years or something else. So you do have title of that property right away, so the lease certificate, which you would have.
So it's your time. Any other questions, comments? Wilson.
Thank you very much.
Well, a lot of the long questions for you, though.
I'll steal. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, now I just got Patrick Brosnan to come up, and Patrick is going to share the update on the facility committee portion of this discussion, which really was kind of the continued advancement of, that's a, Billy, you want, Jeremy else in front of him?
No, just, again, this is, the facility committee is that we've had conversations with Stephanie Farley over at Jefferson regarding the program designed for the building. You know, as Mr. Patterson mentioned, the facilities committee did start looking at ways we could address some of those needs at the school, and still we're going ahead with program driven building for our early learners. This is first watch of that. Obviously, there's more pencil charting that's going to involve, but Patrick's going to present tonight kind of that first review of the facilities committee is taking a look at the early learning center design.
Thank you, Bill. So, when we met on the sixteenth, we presented nine different scenarios, and there were narrow about three. From that, we've been studying option B. Option B gave us the, what we referred with that package, the intergovernmental plan, the, that was the concept of working with, creating a new early learning center as an addition to Monroe Middle School, and doing a land swap with Park District Board to make that happen. Another directive from the board was to study the program. So as was mentioned, we met as a group administration, and Stephanie Farley reviewed the major components of the program at a high level. And we discussed the programs that are at Johnson and Madison, if they were not to move over, how could we reduce square footage of the building? The outcome is a reduction of just under four thousand square feet of space that would allow the reduction of two classroom spaces, the adjacent toilet room, the therapy space, as well as the speech language. The speech language room is intended for the phonology class or phonology program that's at Madison, a speech and phonology. And so, those modifications in program then allowed the building basically to get a little bit smaller. The other components are the parking, the stormwater, all of those things that are basically comparable. The acreage is necessary, it's comparable, and you still preserve some space on the site for future growth. So the, this is a photo of the overall site, take from the southeast corner, looking toward Monroe. You can see there's a significant parcel of land there. It's equates about four and a half acres. What that starts to look like is this, this is the initial plan, so you can understand the difference between the two. This is the original scenario, the, the, the reference. The two wings are roughly equal. They project to the east. In the revised plan, you can see that there's a, there's a little bit, this north wing's a little bit shorter. This, again, is not the final designer building, this is simply a layout, a concept or a test fit, as you may call it. It allows us to identify the major components, where they best belong on the site. This will need to go through several iterations before we have an overall design. The area that's identified in green, both the overall plan and the larger plan, represents about four and a half acres. And that's the acreage that we're considering. And that's the acreage that we're considering, just considering swapping with the Park District. The Jefferson plan diagram, which is in the bill, if the bottom portion of that, if you pulled into the same four and a half acres, and then if you drove by that site, it's just basically to the edge of the south edge of parking at Jefferson. So that would preserve the building, parking lot, and everything, the playgrounds, the south play area, the play field would be the land swap with the Park District. Overall, from our perspective, two roughly equal parcels of land, it's, there's a process that needs to be followed in order to go through that. And it starts with orders of just surveying, boundary surveys, because these parcels right now don't exist. So the county has a parcel of land in the full site, there's subdivision in order to ask to happen. And so it's important, if we're moving, or in this direction, that some of those activities start to happen earlier than later to be able to facilitate an overall process. The reduced plan also generates savings, you know, so overall direction, it brings the building cost down by just over a million dollars, to about 18.1 million dollars overall. And that generates less square footage to build, so that has an impact on schedule as well. Overall, scheduled proposed right now is roughly a fall start construction, say August of 18, with an opening in August of 19, so roughly 12 months period of time for construction. Just to get a feel of what's being considered. And as you see, the overall design is comparable to what we presented before. And the other components, we always talk about the program, there is a program confirmation process that we need to go through, working with staff, individual designs, the layouts. So everything we're showing you right now is really at a high level, and there's a series of steps that we need to go through, program confirmation, schematic design, design development, before we start construction document. So that's the effort that we propose happening between now and that July date for releasing drawings, and then a more brutal bid to an instructional ceremony in fall. So this is overall, a high-level thought process. So overall, presenting a smaller building, smaller spaces, building, less budget, less footprint, and the overall concept of the answer. Any questions?
There's no instruction to students in Monroe during this process and so it's more generic during this period.
The benefit of this site, it does have a unique entrance, it has pride that they put in early part of the construction process to minimize any impact on operations at Monroe . It's really not being interrupted, construction is happening directly adjacent to the building. It is sort of, it could be visual and some noise. The benefit, especially with middle school students, is it's also a learning process that students can gain some benefit by understanding the construction, you see in the construction process. And so there's ways of creating a positive impact with the students on the site as well through different concepts such as the construction camp or a learning day where students are engaged, they can hear as the architect and the builders to understand what's happening. And so our offense what happens is, once the students understand what's happening there, no longer becomes a bother, it's a better engagement and see that progress happen over the course of the year.
And general, how are we talking about, can I ask you a question?
Right now, we're kind of acting link between the two buildings to allow for shared use, so like spaces within the middle school that early learns, they utilize, such as library, which is one of the things we've thought about before, is an early reduction in the program took out a media center from early learning program. So they may field trip over to the middle school to utilize some components there after hours, and then during the summer months, when the early learning centers not being utilized, provide new programs that can push into the early learning center. That might be, you know, a cheer or Tom's using the large board when the early learning center happens to be.
Just to refresh my memory, you had a referendum in April, and that referendum had the Jefferson building in part, and it had square foot size and cost. This reduced project has a different square footage and a different cost. Can we compare those to any future?
Adrian, you might, do you recall your square footage and cost from the referendum plan?
The referendum plan was, we're talking about the previous, the most recent referendum plan, correct? So the building at that point was 47,490, back to fall. The now is reduction previously to 56,000 square feet, 56,000 square feet to 47,000 square feet, the round number is 43,000 square feet. The, I would be able to put cost per square foot.
Oh, right. The referendum was 16.6, I believe.
Right.
16.6, that referendum, most recent referendum.
Right, 27,000 square feet. Now we're talking 18,430.
Right. We have two years of cost escalation. So we're two years later in the building, although who would have that, had you been a primary driver, is that, the other thing, I guess I would say is, remember that at the same point that we are now, even with the design of that new building, the trajectory of cost was high. As we go into something more detailed, kind of design phases looking at the new building, there were some decisions we made that reduced some of those costs. So it's not significant, but you're at a slightly different design phase right now with this concept that you're working on the referendum plan.
I think it's important to understand that the budget right now, Nicholas is working with their best understanding of what the market will be in roughly July, August of 2018. Their, the budgets, that's not final at this point, just like the drawings and the design and the process. At each point in the process of program confirmation, at each of the design stages I just talked about, there is a review of budget and a further study that's done on individual components. Builder right now is looking at, Nicholas looks at, they understand it's probably a masonry steel, they don't know how much masonry, they don't know how much steel, they don't know exactly the heights of the building, they have to be developed and designed further. They're then checking the marketplace. They're also understanding what the projection was versus actually what's happening. So we're going to see through that process of design, there's additional decisions that are being made in program on the materials. Right now, there's a lot of changes happening. So the type of material we might use may change. So we might look at brick versus concrete block, maybe look at a steel structure versus a wood structure. And that will impact some of the design decisions and also that cost. And so the idea right now is that each, end of each of those phases is to go back and write and correct budget adjustment, design adjustment, and to confirm what's still on cap for that angle and recognizing potential savings or cost reductions at the end of the company.
So how long does it take to do this whole network?
Which, what, the initial?
Yeah.
So the program confirmation is roughly, I have a detailed schedule here, but without, it's roughly a six-week effort. And then schematic design, again, about six weeks, and design development, people have many process. And each of those has a point would be coming back to the facility committee during the progress and getting authorization to do that as well.
So I think kind of lunching, I think it's a process of land swap, where we understand that, what we're doing with the Park District.
Yeah, we had a couple of conversations with the Park District, I know Mr. Bernard would speak, kind of board the Park District, and qualifications are very supportive. We have not officially executed an agreement yet. I just wanted to bring this conversation before, we certainly had a conversation with our attorney about what that process looks like. And it really is a very simple process because we are swapping land, Patrick mentioned a couple of the surveys that need to be done to have a few of the official documents that are needed, but the actual land swap agreement is a relatively simple process and it simply takes execution from both boards on the agreement to make that happen. There's no other requirements in that. One of the other things, just as aside, as we look forward, Mr. Farley and Mr. Setti and I had an early conversation as well with the city of Wheaton. We just wanted to make sure that as we explored this concept, that there were no hurdles from the city side, that there were no zoning issues or anything that would be a major impediment to this process. And it was a helpful conversation, just to hear from a couple of the things that we would be mindful of, but there is nothing from the cities and that I think would be a major impediment to this concept.
I have a question. The NSF, that's net square footage, I guess, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's 28,000, and yet the overall building is 43,000. So are we saying that there's, you know, 15,000, 20,000 square feet that, what happens to the 50,000 square feet?
Where's the other square footage go? So the net square foot, that's the usable square footage within the classroom. So the outside of it is the thickness of the wall itself, the corridors, the, maybe the soiled plaza. So we've tried to identify as many of those spaces as we can, and then the anticipated wood element, gross factor, is the remaining square footage. So it's three, six spaces that are not identified enough, or that are unnecessary for the overall building design.
Is there, I don't want to mention about commercial real estate or building, but is that, is that in the parameters of that?
It's similar to, so you think about the real estate, you're thinking about rentable square footage versus the, they use the term net and cost. The rentable square footage, which in our minds, the space that the teacher's going to use, the students are going to use, and then the gross square footage is the, that difference. Gross, the corridor, those necessary spaces, the water, water head room, the main institution frame. So we've identified as many of those spaces as we can, because the district has a certain expectation for, sort of seating room. So we are able to identify here if we can, and as we go through, we get the design process, we find to, you know.
You know, I wanted to clear, it wasn't clear to me until last week, but we talked land swap, the existing Jefferson building is not part of the transfer of the park to, I call it tiers. And so we still have that facility to be bought with. I guess at some point, I would like to still say, and we design buildings based on a number of that we can afford. You know, I keep hearing you're 18 million, or 20 million, whatever number, you know, and I'd like to say, we can spend 15 million dollars. You know, someday I might get over that hurdle, because I'm still struggling, I'm still struggling with that, you know, because no matter what you do, you gotta go off to where you are. And, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, you take an ounce of space from that to the other. You know, but now right here, there's, yeah, you know, almost a leap, you know, two years. I mean, I know that's two years, I'm taking a free start this project in September of next year, 18. And referendum had passed, we're going to start, you know, June. You know, I'm struggling with that leap, that big one. So I know it's a lesson, and I recognize that, but I really would like to say, this is what we afford. If I hadn't done that, I would do some super programs, we could some in Johnson and so on. But I still gotta get over that hurdle before I can, you know, build me after what I've already built. I just, I don't know, I wasn't safe. You know, it's a, it's a lot of money compared to, and I think we were at the 40 year old, 14, only 16,000 for the end. And I know it's a lot, but that seems to be, you know, five, 10, 20, so, you know, when we're looking at supervised, doing that, it's strong.
Let the, let the facility committee, Rob and I are going to kind of summarize why we think this is the right solution. There's a lot of other considerations in our cost range. So as we go through this, we kind of forecast out, so we looked at A, B, and B as our three scenarios, and believe that this governmental plan in Monroe is the best solution. For the long term, we get to essentially build a new building and not have to worry about existing constraints within Jefferson. Operating two schools on one site, not on one, there's other school research developments. And the other benefit of employing it, we're always going to have to impact Jefferson, the educational requirement for those kids who are in force that year. So that's some of the impact, why we think this is a better solution than having to build that to put additional transfers to site, which was scenarios A and B.
The other key point that we just wanted to highlight is this concept of preservation of asset in Jefferson building. Ideally, we've talked about the facility services located in all units on the northwest corner of Monroe, over, and giving it a little more working space, but also freeing up that northwest corner, which is addressed in top line, which is, then lastly, the ability to move the activities and accelerations in Woodland into the building, freeing up that Woodland facility, and not a number on paper, but we would allow you to sell that location at some point, and preserve the asset. But this concept of preserving asset, that one thing, the points I mentioned, that you're not disrupting the progress of Jefferson's construction. And I think we actually talked about that, it actually impacted overall scheduling, so we do, if we get to that original plan. And so this allows, this concept allows you to be on here without any, that program handled. But I think that's, trying to put it down, that's on, very interesting.
So with the kind of blessing from the board to go forward with this process, I think we can target completion for August of 2019, which was a great goal, anticipated, as Patrick said, starting construction next fall, so the timeframe from essentially now through June or July next year, where we start bidding, give us that timeframe, finalize the, that certificate deal, let that cost us, and allow us to open the school in August of 2019, just under two years. So overall, as I would be able to get to other solutions, we don't get to impact the kids in Jefferson during the course of the year, we get to maintain an asset in Jefferson building which will be beneficial to us to get their governmental money over the Park District, the land swap. So I guess the committee, the facility committee agrees that this scenario is the best of all. Of the nine scenarios that we kind of talked back to the table a couple of months ago, and this is overall recommended in form, and I'd like to tell the administration, I'd like to suggest the administration, do whatever processes are starting.
Further discussions, questions?
What would have been the, can we ask the referendum, start on Jefferson, don't be talking about October, March, June, July? I thought that the page should be going out of 17, that was 17, so you're constructing that something, so it's a one-year reflection. So it's actually like, going back to my cost, it's a one-year reflection. So, and I clearly, I don't want to give any impression that I don't think that the Jefferson post is the right one. And I'm just trying to say, you know, one year change of cost from where it was when you were looking, that's a good leap. And I guess the other thing that I'd like to be able to say, or hopefully, maybe do, but socially, maybe break out some components that would be possibly a target for fundraising can. components of that, that would possibly target for fundraising campaign, you know, whether it's a auditorium, or a classroom, or, you know, or a learning center or something, that we can then say, this is what you're funding, we started this money, so that, you know, that we can be specific. But I can still, again, I'm struggling a little bit with that one year differential, twenty percent cost. And I don't know whether we can solve it, you know, in the background.
I think the possible last referendum was put together in roughly, I don't know, 2015, 2016, right, and 2016, we were trying to forecast out what the cost would be a few years later. Now, now we're trying to forecast out what that cost is going to be next summer. And I can tell you, just kind of hand it over from a high perspective, construction costs are increasing, practically way off season yet, and certainly the impact of these hurricanes is going to have an impact on the construction costs, and the materials for foreseeable future. Who knows with gas prices, they know what's going to happen, so that's a big driver of construction costs. So admittedly, at this stage of the process, our consultants are being conservative. It's a lot easier to go down, stick up, as we get into it. So, you know, we don't want to get in that, though.
I agree.
So, so we're, we're being conservative, and, you know, obviously, you know, as the facility committee and our teamwork's on it, we're going to do it with an eye towards believing that, no doubt. And to start the process, we'll make those decisions. Right now, we're just talking at a very, very high level.
I just don't want to be middle of the day, finding a way over the way on, you know, this is a bad decision. So I'm assuming that is the best of the information, but, you know, this is a one year date. You know, I think working in off season with construction for sure is a possibility, which I'm, so I think there's issues that, again, I think it's something we have to, it's not about me, it's somebody that we have to sell to communicate, so this is how we operate, and this is how we compare there, you know, this is why we're doing it, and so on and so forth. But again, feel good about Monroe, okay, and I appreciate the hard work you've supported there, and I think that's a real win-win to do that. So it's just a matter of that cost, and I think we've worked that, we need to change some things, and that's, that's great, and that's the kind of analysis we have to get, so you can, yeah, this is, probably, if you do the best possible, you've got to keep in mind, it puts out some, it does give us some optimism, it gives us a good approval, we're going to do that. And I just really feel that, you know, we can say this is, I don't even mind that, but I agree with you.
Just as a question, so essentially, we're building, we're building up the, so that, not that we get two buildings with the price of one, because we're not producing the same building, but still, there's already a, there's a tariff on the Jefferson. So that does, that's on our, it's on.
That's exactly right. And I just to your question on cost, we're going to have to get three, maybe four, process updates before we even get to June or July of 2018. So that number will become more refined as the design process goes, goes through that. And Nick looks will be testing the market as we go along, so they're not just using their own estimate of what things will cost, as you're working, you feel, once we have a steel layout, they'll, they'll bring in a steel supplier and say, okay, what are you seeing today? Open wood, choice, steel frames, what, what are you seeing per, per ton? And that will inform their, their estimates, and they'll be standing here presenting those, and you're going to say, okay, we're on this move, on that move. So that opportunity will be there, but to test start with giving them a level of detail, whatever we're at today, we'll get it.
Thank you. The next discussion, I'm finding an update on secure entries, capital shortcuts, and fiscal year, and the local funding elements, it's not for sure.
So after, after our discussion around the early learning center, also with the facility committee that we projected forward, and a few of the other projects that we would like to address in the summer of 18. So again, what we heard in terms of potential timeline on the early learning centers, that that project would likely be gearing up to begin next summer, based on whatever bids get out, and that process can move forward. So Mr. Farley, just to update on the other projects that we identified for next summer.
Sure. We did look through the finance, and the facilities committee, and we reviewed the, you know, the secure entries, the early learning centers, secure entries, obviously with another target item to talk about, for doing more of those same schools, that include elementarys as well as middle schools, with Bauer, Austin, Johnson, Edison, Leeder, Sandberg, Pleasant Hill, and, anyway, we do want, we do want to look and get estimates and we can keep going on doing that in summer of 18, as obviously, I mean, I've already listed IFRS, part of our fund, it was IFRS, and then IRF, as the survey went. So the finance committee talked about the potential of moving a lot of money out of fund balance over that projects fund, do that work, kind of our existing fund balance. Talked earlier in the question, all of these, about moving five million to address those gap outs from fund balance, identifying capital items, that right Jefferson, that we are not going to do, we're rebuilding the building. Look at the condition one year, one, and then year one, it's a 23 year range, and we broke this out by a year of the eight million that is in that, and I have about five million plus from that Jefferson property, so there was remaining three million dollars of capital work that we can go on. Then it includes baby flooring, some mechanical work at the north, which we'd like to address, cutting that suburbs, and that will come, that three lane will come out of our, we'll do as well. And then we could have, obviously, if we thought, if the tenant was here about in the 2019, we would start to see those operating payments for the, in the early, early addition of the middle school here, so. So obviously, a lot of work with the roster was reviewed as far as we need to be done, starting in the summer of 18, maybe in the back of 2018 and March. So that, that's probably pushing the limits of, of the amount of things that we can do done next summer, and obviously, the board will be making a commitment of probably the fund balance to operate, the cost, I would be glad to reflect, I think, this year, we've got a lot of, we've got, we've got, we've got about 2.5 million in operating, but it's a little bit, well, that'll be about $3 million, so that, that is there as well. So that will be a full play for our facilities department, our staff, as we look to address a little bit of cutting the ego, the entries, the, obviously, the, as well as all the, 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 which is probably the opportunity to prepare some of that work under the trial, that's a possibility.
Just, just to be clear, you'll start doing work in June, May, June, correct? And if so, then we're taking money out of the 19 budget, right?
Correct. We look very short in construction.
Any questions? Any additional questions, folks?
No, no questions, but I kind of did the math there. Comes up to around 20 to 21 million dollars in project costs, are we next, of, in June, through all, following summer, August of 2019, if you stretch out the row addition. So it's now being, it's 20 to 21 million dollars of 14 different sites, and that's what we're currently on charge. But it is a lot of funding through a combination of fund balance, operating dollar commitments, debt certificates, and possibly, hopefully, adding in some kind of fundraising dollars to, to maybe offset some of those, so I had a summary spread.
Correct. Just a couple of questions. What is secure entry? Why, why do we have to do that?
So in each of our buildings, we want to be able to choose two concepts. One, we want to make sure that we have access control to the building, meaning that somebody can't simply walk in a building without somebody buzzing in into the building, and then you want visitor control once they are inside of the building. So we want them buzzed in, we want them entering the office where our staff know where they are going. So all of our buildings have visitor control, meaning you can't simply walk in any of our buildings without being buzzed. But in the seven buildings that haven't improved and identified, there's not necessarily access control. It's a varying level. There are a couple where it's a small adjustment, but, you know, Leeder is an example of a building where you walk in, you've got quite a distance to go before you're going to be in the office where the person greeting you, knowing where you're going in the building, is directly to the avenue or something. So that's what we want to achieve, as a standard for all of our buildings.
And just another item is, what Brad just summarized, is we're using up our fund balance in excess of 25% by the end of 19.
I don't think that that's going to be the case when we see the annual financial report from this upcoming year. I think that combination looks at committing about $6 million dollars out of that available fund balance. I don't think that's going to use up all of your cushion, yeah, 25%.
I think that would kind of, you know, that's sort of, because if you do 12 and half, it's 15, that's right, that's the city. The, but substantially, our fund balance can be global to its reserve level. And again, I don't want to lose track of that Sherman Burgess funding, which we're creating 2.4, we're targeting to do 7 million in the following year. Still, the theory is going to have some future revenue, future run set up for, you know, I call it future projects. That's, you know, I call it the, for making it's a future. And right now, we're kind of spending every dollar. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind, Sherman Burgess is a funding in the future. And if you spend it every year, we're not going to have any more of that funding, you're talking about. And then the other issue is that in the referendum, we talked about 90 million dollars of capital cost, and I think you talked about 21 million. Okay, well, those 90 million, as I'm following the, in the referendum, and of that 90 million, what are we talking about now? The security star, and what else?
Secure entry was a part of that, so I think the plan, as we probably just identified, addresses a little over 8 million dollars of work out of that capital plan. So a big chunk of that is the Jefferson work that sits in there, and then there's 3.2 million dollars left in the other condition, more items. But you'll be addressing a little bit over 8 million dollars out of that, that chunk that was, was identified, that 84 million dollar chunk.
So 84 million, and that, it's, what did you say, 8 million or something? Okay. So we still have an issue with 72 million plus 20% year interest that we have to deal with in the future, or whatever that includes, more than CPI, though, we had, we talked about that tonight. So I think, again, we have some, we're, we're not out of the woods, I am, you know, we have some serious issues to deal with. We're solving some short-term problems, with the project, with step one, beginning with the learning center, both which were the referendum did, but we still have a buildup of 72 million dollars that we have to address. One day, we have to address, we'll put that on a future topic, but we can't be at the perfect.
Okay, they're still, you know, this, this by no means is the, the absolute long-term solution to all of your, your challenges, but as I think I've said several times, I think this is a very good first step in terms of us addressing some of our highest priority needs. We still have a conversation in front of us over the next six to nine months, figuring out what is the long-term plan around, you know, that capital. I do want to mention on just one thing, so that we're careful with the numbers, your, your capital improvement plan that those numbers come from, it does have cost escalation identified in it. So as those projects are laid out over the year, there is some cost escalation identified in those numbers. That's why when we were talking about the chunk during the referendum, there was some cost efficiency in pulling some of that future escalation out, and doing it in one chunk as well, was just, obviously, taking on a chunk of work at the same time. But to your original point, is valid, and this is step one.
I think as you recall, that was a five-year program, so that clearly, that addressed that, you could shoot capital stack numbers, so that's, and remember, our facility plan for capital needs, might have had that year three number of about 27 million dollars, which is not going to happen for the summer. So that, that naturally is going to kind of push out into years four, five, and six. That's a separate number, which I'm trying to do six, calculate, which is second set. So this is the great first step, but when we get to year three, to years four, what I can be able to catch up on, and we'll have one year.
I mean, it's, it's also not possible to, that, that much, right? But we do have a lot of work to be done, to, 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 to time, I'm sorry, I appreciate that.
Moving on. With reports, we've all received the most influential reports, the player board, the NSAK funding update, the chief of administrative compensation reports, reports of board members, are there any board, new reports?
I have a question, the kind of way that we'll talk about, what is the timetable of, you know, this, we, we kind of agreed, I think, on the role, we, it's funny, but when you start from the national level?
Yeah, so, I think a couple of things that I would forecast are going to come up in front of the board. I anticipate that the land agreement will likely come up in front of the board relatively soon, and I think that's, that's some of the stuff we need to execute. We will begin moving forward with, with leg on the, the design process. I don't know that there will necessarily be an action item around that, as much as there will be some updates over the next couple of months as we, we move forward with, with that. The secure entries, that's something that obviously, we are moving forward on the design of those secure entries. There were a couple of buildings where we need to do some design work in terms of executing that. And so I would anticipate that that, you know, will likely, you know, come forward as, as action items. But I, I think the bulk of work for summer of 18, you know, you probably are looking at authorizing, as I do, that you're up to, then on the number of those projects by already. Good estimate. So, so I guess it's probably in the immediate, that we more kind of updating discussion as we refine and continue to work through part of the next action items that I agree that when it comes together on the land swat, which will be, is a, to make this happen.
That certificates, that follows the bidding, or what?
Yeah, well, I think the debt certificate, probably as we get a little bit closer to refined cost that the board is comfortable with, then I think that's the, you know, I think anticipation of that. I think the finance committee's got to look at a couple of those scenarios, maybe zero in on a length of term, that perhaps is comfortable with based on, you know, a couple of scenarios. But I think that, that runs kind of parallel with, kind of getting ready to take that off the board on the project.
You'll steer back to me, we have done the action, the project, the first phase, or do we have to?
You will. So it will be an action item next year, and technically, that will be fiscal rights in the project. You will, you will take the action, though, when you authorize us to take those projects off the board.
Other reports and board members. We have topics for future discussion, facility master plan, the building center, facility planning priorities. Also, we'll discuss some student learning update, 2017, 18, for roles. Our next meeting is a meeting, the whole meeting on September 47. The school center at 7:00 PM, our next regular meeting is October 11, 2017, 7:00 PM, at Pleasant Hill Elementary School. Do we have any public comments on our agenda? We're about to move to post session, and we have a number of topics that we're discussing. We have two action items, we will need, we need to connect open session, open, open on those action items. So we'll, during the post-session, we'll address those two.